I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, with equal liberty and justice for all.
Let a lot of sink there. So, welcome to the June 11th meeting of the Tiverton School Committee. Tonight, our focus is on a lot of the great things that have been happening in the school district over the last year. First, is there anyone that signed up for open forum? Okay. Great. So, before we proceed with all of the good stuff, can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve the consent agenda, second?
All those in favor? Dr. Santioni?
On the personnel action, we have a retirement 5th grade teacher at Tiverton Middle School doors, Gabriel, retirement 2nd grade teacher for Barton, Maureen Carr. We have some appointments. An English teacher at Tiverton High School, Jessica Scoog. Chemistry teacher at the high school, Sentaya Genja. A guidance counselor that's split between Fort Barton and the high school, Ian Maha. And I'd like to recognize that Ian is here tonight. Thank you. Special education teacher at the high school, Elizabeth Perry.
Okay, thank you.
And just, actually, the English teacher, I was gonna say, the English teacher, Ms. Scoog, is here also. So, I just want to recognize Ms. Scoog for attending tonight. Thank you. Congratulations.
So, welcome to Tiverton. Thank you for coming tonight.
Dr. Larkin?
Yes, Ms. Larkin?
I'd just like to thank the retiring teachers. And Dr. Santioni had a wonderful ceremony last week after school to recognize them and give them a lovely blanket and also recognize the teachers that got their tenure. And it was really, really, I appreciate you doing that. It was a nice ceremony. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Stipends, non-correspondence, Safe Schools Act of 2014 from the Lincoln Public Schools. No subcommittee reports, student reports, or students. So, I'm gonna ask for a motion to move up item 10D.
So moved. Second?
All those in favor? So, this is the last school committee meeting when Mr. Ririck is still part of our district. And so, we wanted to recognize him tonight. Mr. Ririck has been here with us for a long time, as superintendent for 13 years and for the last year as a consultant. He's had many accomplishments over that course of time. I'll just highlight a couple of them that I will start out with characterizing as harm reduction. He sort of led us through many budget seasons successfully preserving the program here. And several iterations of high-stakes testing that I think we all sort of had our heads spinning. He also oversaw the implementation of the ALIS program, our virtual high school, All Day K. The hiring of many principals and teachers, including our three current elementary school teachers, principals, and our high school principal and vice principal. He oversaw the building of Ranger School, as well as the renovation of Pocasset and Fort Barton, and most recently, the junior and high school. And lastly, he showed incredible leadership when we lost Mr. Ferrish last year with kindness, compassion, and insight. So, Mr. Ririck, for your long diligent and meritorious service, we recognize you. I'd like to present you with a certificate and blanket and pen and hope that the blanket keeps you warm in your new endeavors in New Hampshire. So, Mr. Ririck. I think it's like they make the circle.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry for hearing that.
Thank you.
I love you. Thank you.
Don't drip though.
No work is top on the last. If I could, just very quickly, I know, I know you're on, on the clock and I know what it's like to be over there and you've got a long agenda. First, I just want to thank all the great teachers and administrators that I work with. It's been 20 years. Hard to imagine when I first walked through the doors here in 1998 as principal. And we've accomplished a lot of great things. And if it wasn't for my, the teachers and the administrators, all those initiatives that we did implement that Dr. Larkin talked about, we wouldn't have been successful doing so. I'd also like to thank, just not this school committee, but all the other members who came before you, who, without their help, those initiatives just would have been ideas and they would have died right there and then. And then, as you know, as Dr. Larkin said, and I hate to, you get my best side, I apologize. I'm taking a position up in New Hampshire and my wife said, you know, what are you doing that for? And that's discussion for another day. But this past month, I've been spending a lot of time up there doing transition meetings. And on my long ride home on 495 in the afternoon, I realized after my first or second meeting, I kept saying, "Tiverton this, Tiverton that. We do this in Tiverton. We do that in Tiverton." And it made me realize two things. One, I had to stop talking about Tiverton with my new family that I'm gonna be working with. But secondly, it made me realize all the great things that we did accomplish here. And I'm very proud of having had the opportunity to work on behalf of our children, a couple of generations' worth, if I do the math right. And Tiverton will always be with me, no matter where I end up. So, thank you for tonight. I do appreciate the committee taking the time out to recognize me. Thank you very much and thank everybody I worked with. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Tiverton will be with you and Tiverton may haunt you. So, I'm gonna ask for a res, a motion, a motion to move up item 10B.
Make that motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? So, we have our representatives, Mr. Edwards and, uh, sorry, Mr. Canario.
Sorry, we're late. We came out of, we actually missed-
You're early for next time.
We actually missed judiciary and we came out of a closed caucus to get here. And unfortunately, in doing that, I left the citations for the middle school mock trial in my office because we were trying to get here to get the check. Check is really hot. You want to get in the bank like tomorrow?
Yeah, we, we prefer the check.
I know you do, but I'm sure the children will be a little disappointed. This is on behalf of Representative Canario, myself, and Senator Philag, who also could not be here because they have a lot of stuff going on in the Senate this afternoon. So, who would like to come up and get the check?
I guess that's me.
Then you can bring Mrs. Craven up with you as well? Get the money. Thank you.
Very good.
They're always happy when we come down with the check.
I told them where I was coming and they understood.
Thank you.
Okay. Again, thank you very much. I'm gonna ask for a motion to table item 10A until the arrival of Mr. Sowa.
10A?
10A.
10A, open mic.
To table it.
I'm sorry, yeah. I'll make that motion.
Second?
All those in favor? Okay. Item 10C, resolution in support of safe schools. Act of 2013, Mr. Santo? Yes?
Mr. Santo?
Not here? Okay. I'm going to, so maybe we should actually move up the PTO tempo boosters? I'm gonna ask for a motion to move up item 10F.
Make that motion.
Second.
All those in favor? Okay, so this is for PTO tempo boosters update, believe the-
Or orchestrate this for us, if you'd like, Mr. Chairman?
Yep.
And so, we'll go through our, I'm gonna ask each principal to come up and introduce the people who've done some amazing work in our schools this year, supporting our students with a lot of fundraisers and other programs that we're very appreciative of. So, we're gonna start with Fort Barton. So, I've asked Ms. Ward- Maybe we'll start with, um, we'll start with Pocasset. So, Ms. Riley, please. Yeah, I want you to come on up, introduce your people and-
So, I'd like to introduce my PTO. We have Jennifer Wolfe, who's our secretary, co-secretary, and Jennifer Jocelyn, our treasurer.
Hi, like Mrs. Riley said, I'm Jennifer Wolfe. I'm one of the co-secretaries, which is something new. We started doing on our PTO this year. It was me and Kristy Petry who both chaired the position. And it worked out pretty, pretty well for us. We've had a successful year, although we lost our corporate sponsor to the middle school this year. But we did well. We raised $13,240.26. However, that does not include the color run that we wrapped up on Friday. That's still being calculated with the t-shirts and all the color and all that stuff. Some big events that we did this year were our family, family fun movie nights, our Halloween Bash, which is always our really big, huge event of the year, which brings in the most parents and kids. And everybody loves it and looks forward to it. And we have, this is when we do our bake sale as well. This year, instead of doing breakfast with Santa, we decided to do breakfast with the Grinch, which was super successful. The kids really, really were into that. We had a pancake breakfast for dinner as well. We did our third annual, fourth annual, snow, third annual Snowflake Ball. And we also did something else new this year. We had the 4th grade slush shindig, where Hawaiian gym shave ice came and all the kids got their yearbooks and t-shirts and got to hang out with their classmates one more time. Some of the appropriations for our funds this year are going to go toward additional flexible seating. Oh, I'm sorry. This is what we've already purchased this year. Sorry. This is why we have moral support. We've already bought additional flexible seating. We do the Scholastic magazines for each grade that the children get throughout the school year. The 3rd grade got their recorders. That's been fun. We have a new mindfulness program, I believe in kindergarten. Is it through kindergarten? The 1st graders went on a trip to the Zitierian Theater. We bought more classroom books. The students also did a symphony trip to the Zitierian. And our money also went through Teacher Appreciation Week, Nurse Appreciation Week, and Principal Appreciation Day. And the 2nd graders also went on a trip to the Zitierian Theater, which was the thing to do this year. Our fundraisers included mixed bags, Otis Spunkmeyer cookie dough. We had two book fairs, one in November, one in April. Our holiday shop, which we ran a little different than normal this year, which turned out very, very successful and minimal stress with our volunteers. We also do the soul-warming soup fundraiser in January. We had our parents' night out to Foxwoods, which we teamed up with the middle school. And that was a real fun, super fun trip. Original artworks in the spring. We also have our Clements receipt fundraiser that we do, as well as everybody's favorite box tops. And then, our passive fundraisers, Shopperoo and Stop &amp; Shop. And then, the biggest one is our color run at the end of the year. We are using our color run profits this year to purchase a sensory hallway path that students can, it's like hopscotch and numbers and different paths they can follow. We're still kind of questioning where we're gonna be placing that, but the kids will really, really enjoy that. And we are also trying to get a water filling station for somewhere in the building. We've had a really good volunteer turnout this year. For color run alone, our final total was 53 volunteers. And we've consistently been able to keep up that momentum. We've never had to beg for anybody to help us. So, and we like to give them a big thank you because we're nothing without our volunteers. And I think that about wraps up Pocasset.
Great, thank you.
I'd like to call our principal, Wardell.
We've had a fantastic year at Fort Barton with our PTOs. I'd like to introduce to you the PTO president and vice president, Kate Gilvain, and Heather Perry.
I have that video I sent you. Is there any way to queue that up? So, what Heather is handing out is a preview of some of the flyers that we sent home to the school. I have a background in advertising and advertising sales, so for me to entice parents to come to our fundraisers and events, I want them to want to be there. So, here's a sample of the flyers that Heather's sending out of the new events that Fort Barton did. Fort Barton, this year, we had two, three, four, five, six, seven new items on our calendar of things that we did. We started our summer with kindergarten orientation. And then, we had Parent Landscape Day. We felt badly that our custodian got pulled to the middle school and high school to do construction. So, when it came time for open house at the school, the landscape looked a little drab. So, with a few text messages, we got a handful of parents, an afternoon, and 13 yard waste bags, and we cleaned up the school. And at our last meeting, we decided that we're gonna make that a yearly event. We are followed up by the open house. And then, with the construction going on at the middle school and high school, we could not have our yearly Halloween dance. So, instead, we got in contact with the Nagatuck Farms. They allowed us to borrow their space. We got a bunch of vendors. We got a food truck. And we had our first Halloween festival. And that's the first flyer that you guys have in front of you. That got sent home with the kids, along with a coupon for a free pumpkin that they got to redeem. I do not remember the vendor for the pumpkin. Followed up by our fall fundraiser, Mixed Bag. That was successful. Again, that's always a big hit. And then, we had our book fair, followed by School Spirit Week. And then, first time ever, we did Supermarket Sweep. How many people are familiar with that show? Where everybody gets to run through the, where one person gets to run through the grocery store all by themselves and go nuts? All right, I'll figure it out in a second. So, the Supermarket Sweep, that's the next flyer that you guys have in your little packet. One winner bought, one person bought a ticket. He got a two-minute shopping spree inside Clements all by himself after the store closed. The guy went nuts. He bought $1,100 worth of meat that he couldn't fit in his car or refrigerator to get home. So, he had to store it at Clements Grocery Store and then they cut it up into smaller containers. Next year, we might try to get Home Depot or maybe Lowe's to donate a freezer to go along with it, so that the winner can keep his stuff. Yeah, so, we're working on that one next year because I think the ticket price was a little too high as well. It was a little too steep right before Christmas for people. We followed up with the holiday shop, where we decided, instead of making money off of that, we made it a free product for the kids. We took 0% profit. It was a wonderful afternoon. We had some supply and demand issues and that got postponed and spread out a couple of days. But I think all in all, we'll redo that. We're gonna go with a different supplier this year. We followed up with Soup and Cookies. That's always a favorite. And then, 100th Day of School. And then, Providence Bruins and Dr. Seuss Night. And then, for the second year in a row, we did our Fort Barton Talent Show, followed by another book fair because it's buy one, get one, so why not? And then, we did Teacher Appreciation Week. Am I missing something? Sorry. My little list here. Then, this past May, we had our first ever Spring Dance. We had it at the middle school. We made it spring-themed. Oh, you got it?
Yes.
Is it up?
Yes.
It's okay. The sound's just annoying background music. So, don't worry about that. Go for it. Here's the video that my husband and I created of the Supermarket Sweep. I'm looking nervous. It's a little glitchy. Sorry. Do you want me to keep going? I'll come back? There he is. This is Dr. Anthony Ameo. He's a pediatrician at Newport Aquinic Pediatrics. My daughter sold him the winning ticket at her yearly physical because she guilted him into doing it. We sold around 89 tickets at $25 a pop. And then, Clement, Clements had a deal with us where it was a $1,000 deal. They gave us 10% off. And then, since he went over the $1,000 limit, Clements picked up the difference for him. So, he walked out with $1,100 worth of groceries for a $25 ticket. It's a pretty sweet deal.
It's a great idea.
It's a pretty big file, so it might take a while. So, where am I? Where in May? We had our first dance. We had a semi-formal optional dance. Come on. Yeah, look at all the meat.
It's not moving that fast.
Yeah. He, he went through the grocery store before the event and plotted his route. And his wife said, "You need to stop and get lobster meat." And then, his daughter, he asked his kids, he's got three kids, and he requests. And his daughter was like, "Nutella." So, when you watch the video, the last thing he grabs is he pit stops at the Nutella and hawks it in the cart. We had a limit of five of each item for each, for him to get. So, you can see, he grabs two prime ribs. He's got filet mignon, lobster meat. It was, there's the Nutella. Yeah. Yeah. He's got his kids running with it. He came with an entourage. Like, I wasn't expecting it. We had the GoPro attached to the front of the shopping cart. And then, he almost dismounted it, like, one second into the video. He tucked stuff in and hit the GoPro. But Clements has signed on to do it again next year, but I think we might drop the price to make the tickets a little more customer-friendly. But we just gotta sell more tickets. That's the problem, so. Be ready. Yeah, you're all. So, this past May, we had our first semi-formal dance. I'm sorry. It was at the middle school. It was, I think it was very successful. The kids had a good time. It was a little too long. If we do it next year, or when we do it next year, we're gonna change the time. But for being a semi-formal, a lot of kids really took it seriously because it was right after Easter, so they had the clothes. We had the Memorial Day Parade. Our color run was last year. Our color run is actually tomorrow. We had to postpone it due to the weather. That's coming on Thursday, so that should be interesting. Our field day is Friday. For the first time, I petitioned the Secana River Bridge Association. And on the last day of school, the lights on the bridge will be rainbow colored in honor of the Tiverton School Department. So, you guys can spread the word for all the little kids to look and say, "That's for you guys." We have the Tiverton Days Parade coming up. We just filled out the paperwork. We haven't decided if we're gonna do a float or just march. It's all car insurance-based. We pay for storytellers and assemblies. We have our monthly meetings. And also, for the first time this year, are you guys all familiar with smentals? The smelly pencils, the scented ones that all the kids are afraid? We started in January and we tested out selling smentals the first Monday of every month, popular smental Monday. On average, we sold $110 in smentals. And I, I don't know. I have way too many at my house. So, that will be continued next year as well. We pay for the field trips and the busing, as usual. Box tops, Shopperoo, Clements. And we just signed on with Shutterfly, so that any parent that had paid for their kids' school photos, you can get it on any kind of merchandise now. And we had an event called Restock the School because every parent wants their child's teacher's classroom to be filled with all the paper towels and hand sanitizers. So, I think that was in February. As a PTO, we decided to go shopping and we resupplied all the classrooms with all the fun stuff because every kid was getting sick. And it was just, we had to do something. We purchased recorders for the music class. And then, we purchased, last year, what, six new air conditioners? Or seven? I remember. Something like that. Yeah, enough. So, hopefully, we'll be plugging them in and using them soon. I know. Yeah, they're installed. Yeah, they just haven't been turned on yet. So, that's it. Yeah, that's what we're doing at Fort Barton. Thanks.
Good evening. So, I'm gonna introduce Renee. She's our PTO president. We've had a fantastic year this year at Ranger. We also, for the first time, we participated in the color run. And our field day was last Thursday. And it was, it was a great day, a great event. Oh, Friday, that's right. Thursday we rained. So, we postponed it to Friday. We raised enough money to go, go ahead with the addition to our playground that we presented a couple, a couple of meetings ago. So, I'm gonna turn it over to Renee.
Hi, I'm Renee DeRost. I'm the PTO president. We have to thank Manny first and foremost because he totally supports us 100% in anything we want to do, as long as it's organized chaos. He's on board for it. And as well as the teachers, they're awesome. So, we are very lucky at Ranger. So, this year, we had two active fundraisers, one in the fall, which was Soup and Cookies. And we raised just under $8,000. And then, we had, to Manny's point, the Spring Color-Thon on Friday. And we raised $11,000. Sorry, I'm not a good public speaker. So, for our passive fundraiser, I mean, our active fundraisers, we had just under $19,000. So, and then, with our passive fundraising, which is dine-out nights, box tops, Stop &amp; Shop, we raised just over $2,000. So, what we're doing with that money this year, besides supporting all the events, is we had the kids choose three designs. For $16,000, we are adding to the playground. I don't know if everybody can see that. And this is the design that the kids chose. And it's about a 30 by 40 dimension. And it will allow for the most kids to play at one time. And we are consulting with, contracting with Megan O'Brien for the installation. And the excavation was donated by Peter's Landscaping. So, he really allowed us to do this because the excavating costs were so hefty. So, he's doing that. And we're looking at August, maybe? Okay, for installation. So, we had 17 events this year. Our biggest two events, one is in the spring and one is in the fall. That's the Halloween party. We had probably 350 people there. It was the hotspot in Tiverton that night. And we have a DJ and the kids dress up. And we had carnival part, games. It was lots of fun. We've had two book fairs. We did a holiday shopping event for students. We do not raise any money really for any of these events. We basically just do it to break even. We try to raise money, but the costs associated with throwing the events, we usually just break even. We had a couple of assemblies. We had Johnny the K come in December for the entire school. We did a holiday giving tree event. We pay for all the busing for the classroom field trips. And we formalized the color cycle program. So, the color cycle program is just basically taking used markers, dry erase markers, and sending them back to the company. So, we're getting the students involved in recycling, so they don't end up in a landfill. So, we did that. We did a week full of teacher and staff appreciation surprises. We got a personal chef and we had them cater lunch for all of our teachers. I think they enjoyed that. We had a breakfast. We did a restock of the closet for school supplies. And we gave them lots of fun gifts. We had a very successful science fair. We had over 50 participants. And that happened in April. And I think it was well-attended. And the kids raised money. And we donated that money from a bake sale at the science fair to, I believe it was Potter League. The children actually chose the charity they wanted to donate. We had another assembly during Literacy Week, which was the Magic of Books Assembly from Tommy James. He's excellent. Keeps the kids really engaged, as well as the adults. We did a puppet show for pre-K and kindergarten. We did our BOGO book fair in the spring. We had another large event for the entire school, which was our Spring Fling Event. Again, I think we had roughly over 300 participants. We had carnival games and a DJ. Last Friday, we did our Field Day, our cookout, and our color run. And we had an amazing turnout with volunteers. We had about 50 volunteers for the entire day. So, that was excellent. We have a new yearbook coordinator. She did fabulous. She produced our yearbook. And she also held a cover contest. So, the 4th graders got to design the covers. And then, we had a small subcommittee vote on the cover. And the, I believe it was Colin Moriarty who won. And his design will be the cover of our yearbook. And the top other four children's designs were featured throughout the yearbook as well. So, that was kind of fun for them. And then, next week, we're doing our 4th grade farewell celebration. We also participated over last summer in the parade. We had a tiki-style float. It was, it was pretty big. And I think we had about 50 kids join us. And we also participated in K orientation. So, this, so, a majority of our fundraising money will go to this. This, they, the kids, of course, chose the most expensive design- This, they, the kids, of course, chose the most expensive design. So this is gonna cost us 14,600. And then the playground mulch is about another 2,300. So that will leave us with a balance of about 8,800 to start the new school year. So I think they'll be in good shape. So, thank you.
Thank you.
So at this point, I'd like to invite Jocelyn Sherman, the middle school PTO president, to the podium to speak on behalf of the middle school.
Mrs. Sherman, just before you go on, thank you for coming. Ladies, Ms. Mullin, Ms. Borges, Ms. Destrems, if you can't be quiet and pay attention to the proceedings, please take it outside. We appreciate that you guys want to talk to each other, but it's very disrespectful. Thank you. Ms. Sherman, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Last year at this time, I thought I was entering PTO retirement. So I did not think I would be back here talking to you all tonight. But things sort of changed in August. And I'd like to thank Dr. Senkione for that and Mrs. Craven. It's been a fun year. I jumped into the middle school world with no knowledge of middle school and what we should be doing and what we could do. So we kind of just learned as the year went along. We did a lot of active fundraising with, for boosters and for PTO. We combined the two. And as the year went on, we learned that something happens with middle school kids. They don't bring their packets home. I don't know what it is. You could do a cookie dough fundraiser at Picassett, and they bring in $6,000. At the middle school, we brought in $2,000. So we have learned throughout the year that our event-based fundraisers are much more successful. So when you put the two together, between the active fundraisers and events, we raised about $15,000 with those events. We have some passive fundraising, too, like Box Tops and Clements. And of course, I can't compete with the great Picassett with Box Tops. I only brought in $700. But, you know, they have a little empire down there. So, we're building. We've done a lot over the year, considering that we're a pretty small group. And again, we jumped in not knowing what we were doing. We did a welcome-back breakfast for the teachers. We did some collection of hand sanitizer, tissues, things like that during open house. We had two book fairs this year. We've done three orders of spiritware, because we now have a school store, which is pretty exciting. Working on those hours, but we're trying to make it a little more available. We had six dances throughout the year. And I think my favorite project this year was our bathroom project in the fall. And I know there's people in this room that helped. And I want to say, over the course of that weekend, we probably had 45 volunteers. So that was a really fun weekend. That weekend alone was probably 400 volunteer hours, which is pretty, pretty impressive. I thought, I think Mrs. Craven thought we'd be done on Sunday. And we're like, "We need one more day." And we got it done, and the bathrooms came out great. That was a lot of fun. We supported some field trips for 5th grade, some assemblies. We had a glow dance. We had a snowflake ball, too. Sorry, we stole that from Picassett. We had the URI men's basketball team visit. And we did a lunch launch of our new mascot and logo. That was a lot of fun. American Revolution Assembly for 6th grade. We had our students participate in the basketball tournament. We paid for boosters, trophies, and uniforms. And then we've had several events. Like, we decided in March, "Let's not have a dance, let's have a social." So maybe some kids don't like dances, but they want to shoot around in the gym, they want to play games. That seemed to work out really well. We did a teacher room makeover. I wish I had pictures, because speaking about it doesn't really do it justice. We had a lot of, lot of fun with that surprise. Another book fair, 8th grade field trip, which is tomorrow. 8th grade promotion this week. We're doing Field Day on Friday. And we're actively trying to raise money to start a spring track program and boys' and girls' soccer. So, that's the summary of Tiverton Middle School.
Great. Thank you.
Yes. At the high school, we're always greatly appreciative of our Tempo and Boosters groups. And so, I'd like to introduce both. We'll begin with the boosters and Mr. Brigham. And then, following Mr. Brigham, will be Ms. Flanagan and Mr. Carl for our Tempo group. Mr. Brigham, thank you.
Thank you for your time. I greatly, kind of what we've done so far this year. Some varsity jackets. I mean, the championship jackets for softball and field hockey. We're in the process right now of getting the football and the girls' soccer team purchased. Those are out right now. They're just, hopefully, we get them by the sports banquet that's coming up. And then the, the end-of-year ceremony that they have, that Coach Murray has. We'll do all the awards certificates, and we'll purchase all that for him. We had two, two big events this year. We had our holiday raffle, which was something we kind of, kind of did to kind of change pace and get away from the comedy show that we had been doing. I think we're gonna change it up this fall again. And then our golf tournament, which was, you know, pretty successful for us this year. Our main focus right now is our golf turn, I mean, our sound system. We are about 80%, 85% funded for it. You know, so we have a little bit, a little bit more to go with that. It's $23,000 system that it'll be able to use for graduation. You know, whatever events happen at the school. You know, any of the classes want to do, like they do field days or whatever they do out there. Sporting events. You know, the Color Run that they had the other day. You know, they'd be able to use that, track and field. You know, just kind of, you go to different schools, and they, they have that. And it kind of builds that enthusiasm. So that's kind of, you know, what we're aiming at right now. So we're about, we're roughly about 85% funded on that. We've still got a little bit more to go. We also do, which isn't posted here, one of the things I forgot, we do the $2,000 in scholarships. So it's four student athletes, and they get $500 each. Next year, I think we're looking at maybe before school starts or right at the beginning, maybe a bocce tournament for our fall fundraiser. We're trying to just do two events. That way, I know there's a lot of small-town, a lot of fundraising going on. Instead of, you know, nickel and diming everybody, just do two events where we can get everyone involved. You know, kind of like the golf tournament, where we had, you know, superintendent, you know, principal, you know, a lot of, you know, Mrs. Black was there. It was just a lot of involvement. You know, you get to see, you know, different people there. Getting, getting involved with some of the students, you know, some of the coaches, you know, the parents. You know, it makes a good event. Like, the dinner is, is a lot of fun. Everyone's hanging out and just kind of mingling with each other and getting to know each other. So, kind of makes it a fun tournament. So that's kind of our, our philosophy. Just kind of do two things, you know, and, and raise the money for it. And we're trying to angle everything now, as opposed to, I think in the past, we did a lot of, a lot of stuff that left the school. And so now, we're like the current, we did, you know, it's staying here. Uniforms, you know, they're gonna stay here. We did golf, basketball, girls' basketball. You know, a couple, a couple of different things occur. And like I said, and the sound system that can be used by everybody. And that's kind of how we, you know, may change direction of what we're trying to do.
Great. Thank you. Good work. Of course.
How far away are you from the money needed for the sound system?
We are probably about... It's, it's tough to say. We're about 27,000, 28,000. But, but money's out, depending on what the football jackets cost and how many. It's kind of, it's tough, you know, we kind of, kind of, and how much the soccer, how many kids are on the team. I let, we kind of changed how we do with the championship gear, as opposed to just buying sweatshirts for everyone or jackets for everyone. We let them pick, pick, pick what they wanted. Give them a, give them a value. Pick what they want, put what they want on it, let them deal with it, and then just pay it. So we're kind of waiting for that to come back in. So I'm thinking 85-ish, you know, plus or minus. You know, we're, we're close.
Good.
Yeah, hopefully, you know, we do a few things, and we have some sponsors coming in. Maybe we can do something with Treehouse. It's, it's a very expensive system. I know people will say, "Well, you know, it just costs so much." But...
Quality.
Yeah. And you get the warranty. And you, I don't want to be 10 years from now, it doesn't work. You know, we want to get something that's, you know, that, you know, works well. It's gonna work for a long time. And then, we changed it, too. It's that it projects the soccer. You can kind of involve tennis. I know it's really not something you would, you know, Coach Phillips probably was a really, probably really would want, maybe warm-up. We kind of changed, we increased it. Originally, it was like 18, 18, 9, you know, 19, 19, 5, somewhere in that window. But then we, we wanted to include the softball field. So then, it kind of changed, added a speaker, they, they kind of changed, you know, the, the electrical and, you know, it, it increased it, you know, substantial amount, but included more people. You know, and I think with, like I said, they, you know, the amount of events that go up there with, you know, graduation. And it'll be a system that you could, you can sit here and talk. It's, yeah, it'll be, you know, it's a high-quality, you know, the company works Gillette, you know, McCoy. They, you know, they're...
Very reputable.
Yeah, yeah. So...
If there's a donor out there, 8,500 is the number.
Yeah. And hopefully, I'm gonna talk to them, you know, in the upcoming weeks. Hopefully, we can get them to, we can kind of set up something where we can get installed over the summer. And then, you know, cover the, cover the rest of the costs is over. But we're not at that point yet. But I'll touch base with them, because it'd be great to get it for next year.
Yeah.
Can I ask you one question before you go? I've been curious about this. You're offering varsity jackets now for sale.
Yes. While they're not there, we changed that. That was posted early on in the school year. And I know there's been questions about as many places as we could. The, the school, Mr. Ashley's great support that he gives us, this, we posted with the school, our website, our Facebook, as many places as we could, because it's changed now. It's a school jacket.
Okay.
It's not a varsity jacket. So, the, the point with that is that a lot of people told us that if they get the jacket, you know, their junior year in the summer. So they wear it, you know, for three months, if that. And then it's, as opposed to, if we sell it as a school jacket, freshman orientation, when they come in, whenever the date is, we'll have them, we already have it planned, and we'll have them hanging, and they can come in and buy the jacket. Or look at, you know, see, "Hey, this is something you can wear for four years." And as you earn your, as you earn your...
Your letters, your pins.
Yeah. And you can get it, whatever. You can get, you know, you'll have it, when they order it, it'll be embroidered. You know, name, whatever number they want on the thing. And, you know, they'll have the regular tivity on the back. And then as they get their letter and their pins, they just have it, you know, they'll have to bring it somewhere to have it done. But it gives them the opportunity to, you know...
They can wear it for four years.
Yeah.
That's fantastic.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Good work.
Thank you.
Hi, everyone. I'm Holly Flanagan. I'm the president of the Tempo Organization.
Hi, I'm Ken Carlisle. Everyone knows me here, but yeah, I've got three kids in the school system, so...
So I will talk very briefly, but Ken will go over just a quick overview of what the Tempo Organization has done this year and how we raise funds and how we spend our money. But I think we do have a lot of newer administrators to our district, and there's always new people listening at the meetings. So Tempo stands for Tiverton Encourages Music Participation Organization. And I was born and raised in Tiverton. And I've had three kids, two go through the schools, and one that's a freshman in high school now. And what I keep hearing here tonight, but also what I want to bring to the forefront, is that I'm able to kind of have some retrospect now. I think when we're all volunteering in these organizations, PTO and the boosters and Tempo, when we're in it, it's so busy, and we're very focused on raising money. It's, it's all about making sure the kids have experiences, but it's about raising money to make sure that happens. And I think sometimes, it's a little better to take a step back and look at the reason that we're doing this is really our community. And I think one of the things that music brings to the table is community and is excellence, not just encouraging music participation, but encouraging music excellence. And as a district, we are very fortunate, and everyone has music in their curriculum that's across the entire United States. But having the opportunities for kids to participate and perform invites the opportunity for them to build self-esteem, to grow in not just an academic way, although we do know that students who study music are also typically more academically involved, or it definitely gives them a boost in many of those areas. But the fact that we are able to have kids perform, beginning at the elementary level, and I remember being in the PTO at Ranger, and I heard folks mention here tonight at each of the PTOs, buying those recorders, which we all roll our eyes at, like, "Oh, good lord, remember the recorders?" And how they sounded, and how proud the kids were, and how many of those little yarn pieces they got from them. But those are the same students who became the top percussionists in the state. Those are the same students who are going on to study music, or who are now, out of their shell, more confident. And when we are able to bring students outside of just the academics and encourage this kind of participation, we help them build their self-esteem. We provide a reason for families to come out and get together and come to a performance at the elementary level, at the middle school level, at the high school level. Whether it's strings, or chorus, or band, or travel somewhere for jazz band, or concert band, or any of the other music pieces. So they're adjudicated. That's what we're raising money for, so they can go on these trips. These are fun trips, but they're not just trips. The amount of work that these students and the teachers put into these trips help our students gain confidence, learn how to take constructive criticism, and grow as a person, not just as a musician. So it's a, it's a whole-person approach. And the community aspect of it, I think, cannot be understated. We all have fun going to sporting events. Those are fabulous and fun. And going to a Christmas concert is a family tradition. Bringing the folks from some of the more elderly housing or different places to our concerts, it builds a sense of community. So continuing that appreciation and anything that we can do to help build those funds and to bring that through line right up from the recorder, all the way up through the middle school and high school, and to continue to make sure our kids have those opportunities, is really what our goal is. And when you see kind of how we raise money and how we support the music program through our funding, I think you'll see some of the hard work that goes into that, because you certainly see it when our students are marching down at the Tiverton Parade, or at the Holiday Parade. That's a source of pride for our town. And we appreciate the administrators and the families, but most especially the students who put the work in. So, thank you for having us here tonight. And Mr. Carlisle, we're a team. We've got a show going on. Yeah.
All right. Thanks, everyone. So Holly gave you the why. I'm gonna give you the how. And that's really following the money. So real quickly, Holly kind of went over the Tempo group and kind of discussed that. So currently, President Holly. Got a Vice President, Julie Baker. Secretary is Carrie Tabor. And we've got two treasures right now. So I'm covering the middle school, and Beth Shanier's covering the high school. I had this presentation all set for the middle school, and then we decided to consolidate and get everything in. So I've thrown some numbers. We are one organization. So this, this represents both at this point. So I kind of threw the numbers together. So first up, here's our incoming funds for the year. Roughly about 25,000, 26,000. Half of that was in fundraising. The other half of that was in the concert admissions. So admissions, raffles, and concessions. And concessions just at the concerts, not at the games. Okay? So if we break that down, the other 20, 12,500 roughly, came in from fundraising, and that came in from these sources. Snap Raise and the Twin River Casino. Remember those? I'll come back to those in a minute. Those were general fundraisers, and those went into the general account. Almost all the others, all the others are individuals, right? Amazon is not. And gift, and the dine-out is not. All the other ones are individuals, right? So whatever the, whatever the students make in those fundraisers, they keep in their account. Okay? And they can use that to offset the cost of the trips. And I'll cover that more in a minute as well. So you can see right now, the Snap Raise was like a quarter of our fundraising this year. Pie was another quarter. Everyone loves the pies. And the pies was an individual fundraiser. So if we move on, so now we come to the expenses. So you can see this year, the Disney trip was forty-two percent of our expense this year. Okay? And when you look at that, that's thirty-nine hundred dollars from fundraising. That is Snap Raise and the, and the Twin River donation. Okay, so we raised thirty-four hundred dollars in Snap Raise and five hundred from the, from the casino. Okay? We took that and that went to the bottom line for the trip, so that reduced the cost overall for the trip. The other eight thousand dollars is from the student accounts. So the individual fundraisers that they were running, they were making their money, and they've been doing this for four years, all through, all through middle school and up until this year. They can use that money at any time they want, but knowing that this trip was on the horizon, a lot of them saved it and they had, you know, substantial funds in their account to cover this. So eight thousand dollars came out from the student accounts to cover the cost for them. Instruments this year, so thirty-five percent of our expense was on the instruments. And then, you know, all the rest is down there. So we covered the all-state fees, we, twenty-three hundred dollars in uniforms. The festivals down there on the, on the lower half, that covers the middle school. So it's the Great East Festival and a couple of other things. Next, so then we go on to instruments. So this year we bought roughly about ten thousand dollars worth of new instruments. New or, you know, used but still in good condition. So we got two bass clarinets, a couple of baritone sax. There was a Yamaha sax, which is not pictured, and then assortment of the little miscellaneous ones. And then real quickly, shameless fundraising plug. So as part of our dine-out program, we're doing this every month, so we're picking a different restaurant in the general area every month that we're having a dine-out. If you dine out today at Applebee's, we'll get fifteen percent of your bill. Okay? But you do have to mention Tempo and make sure that they, they record that, so they know that, you know, we drove those sales in. And we're going to be running that every month.
We have till eleven.
And that's it.
Just one more point that I think everyone should remember is that almost every student's instrument that they play right from the middle school on is something that their parents buy or rent, for the majority of the instruments. But some of them are either non-lethal or cost prohibitive for families to purchase or to rent. And those are the instruments among the other instruments that we keep in our ensembles that we make sure students have the opportunity to play, to round out our given, to round out our strings program, that we pay for and maintain those instruments and do it well, so that we have that.
Yeah, this year we hit the lower registers with the, the bass clarinets and the baritone sax. But last year we had, oh, low register as well, we had a tuba, which was like four grand, and then two bass drums.
I do have one question, if you don't mind. What is Snap Raise?
Snap Raise?
Thank you.
Never heard of it.
Uh, sure.
They're like, oh, where can we get some of that?
Snap Raise, they come in and they, they basically do a promotion. You promote it through emailing, you know, as, as many places as you can, put it on social media. And it, it's kind of like a.
It's kind of like GoFundMe.
Yeah, kind of like GoFundMe, exactly.
But it's more for fundraising with schools and things like that. And they'll come in, they'll do a promotional video with you, with the students whose parents get permission to go into the little video. And then students provide a certain number of email addresses or things like that that the Snap Raise goes out of, it's pretty much a direct fundraiser. Click on this, you see the video, we're raising money for our Disney trip, or whatever it is. And, you know, people can donate. One of the things that we decided to do, we tried it for the first time this year, it was put together very quickly by Vicki Barrett, thank you for her, she's great with fundraising. We tried it, it was, it was very successful as far as like, it just brings in direct dollars. I think if, if you get like seventy percent participation from your group, you won't take in less than seventy-seven percent of the take. They take a small percentage, and they have incentives. But I think what we decided to do with Snap Raise next time is, it was a general fundraiser, so all of the kids that wanted to participate did. And then we took whatever money was taken in, even if it was only raised by five kids, and used it to bring down the cost of the trip. But we kind of decided as an organization in the future to use Snap Raise for something that's more of a big fund. When we really need to, you know, at some point, we're going to need a way to transport our music and have like a trailer, like, you know, some of the other districts do, or depends on where our, you know, music program goes, but for something big and targeted for something like that. Because any, you know, somebody could just say, well, I'm still here, I'm going back to my trip, and that's great. But so we're kind of trying to figure out how to use it differently. But it was very easy, so if anyone wants to email us or.
And how, how much did you raise for that?
Thirty-five hundred dollars.
It was very quick, it was twenty-eight day campaigns, and we didn't get a hot, not a lot of students participated. A lot of our fundraisers this past year were put together quickly, we have a calendar already set for next year. Instead of, what are we going to do now, what are we going to do now? So, and they did come together quickly, and it's a good one.
One other thing I'd like to mention, see, Amazon Smiles up there at zero percent. It raised six dollars this year.
Yeah, what is that?
So with, with Amazon Smile, I think this is something, everyone here shops at Amazon, right? So there are a lot of charities within Tiverton that have signed up for Amazon Smile. So if you go to your Amazon account, you can look for a charity to donate. At one percent of anything that you shop on Amazon, I think it's one percent, it might be different for different categories. But they will just make a donation once a quarter, cut a check, and drop it right into your account. Okay? So, and there's, there's a bunch of, is Mike Brighamstone? So I know the boosters are out there, I know there are others, but, you know, we'd love for you to all select Tempo. But if you're not going to select Tempo, at least select something from Tiverton and.
Because we all shop on Amazon, and the shameful thing is, we knew about Amazon Smile, we said we would all sign up, and this only one person signed up, and it was six dollars, and it was Kim Carlisle. So we all feel ashamed, so we're just going to have to have a big party where Kim helps us all go through the whole thing, get signed up, and so we can start getting passive money from Amazon, because we all signed up.
We're going to get the instructions, I'll set that up again, it's out on the. Yeah, it's out on the Facebook sites and everything, but it'd be good for everybody to take a look at that again. You know, pick, pick a charity, doesn't matter which one.
Put me down for a pie.
Thank you.
I didn't know you were selling them. Okay, I think that completes item ten F, and I believe I see Mr. Soa somewhere lurking back there. So I'm going to return to item ten A, recognition of the mock trial of Tiverton Middle School.
Awesome, I'm going to ask.
Mrs. Costa's not here?
Yeah.
Oh, well, we, by all means, we should wait for Mrs. Costa. Okay.
Go to E.
Yeah. Okay, there's someone with a pretty fancy hat, though. I'm going to go to item ten E. Rhode Island, two thousand twenty Rhode Island Student Survey Approval for Mrs. Elwell.
So this is the every-two-year request for surveying. A letter was received by Dr. Sankeoni, which was signed by the Directors of Department of Health, Department of Behavioral Health, and RIDE. This year, we're delighted to have RIDE as a signer on that request, which I know makes school departments feel an even greater investment in collecting this data. It's health and wellness data, mental health data, and substance use data that's collected through this every-two-year survey. So the request simply is for permission to administer the survey in grades seven through twelve, not until next February or March, but trying to get in advance on the administrative end of things and simply asking the superintendent's approval, as well as the school committee's approval for that administration.
Okay, so I'm going to ask for a motion to approve for purposes of discussion.
I'll make that motion.
Serious, okay. Any questions or discussion, Mrs. Black?
No, I just, I would add, I think it's very worthwhile, valuable for the district. I reviewed the data from the previous years, and it gives us some insight to where our students are and what they're involved with, and helps us plan programming for them.
Okay. Anything else, Mrs. Black? Mrs. Pavo?
No.
Mrs. Farnworth? Whatever your name is.
Whatever my name is.
Takes me a while sometimes.
You're not the only one. Rebecca, I'm trying to remember, and this just occurred to me, I just don't want to let the moment pass. Did we have any kind of adjustments to that survey last time around for certain questions?
We had a lengthy discussion about the questions, and some of the questions that were newly added were around gender identity and sexuality. So we had a lengthy discussion, but there were no amendments made.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Anyone else? Any parents or teachers' questions? All right, I'll ask for a vote, all those in favor? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I do have the two forms that require signatures, if I could leave it with Dr. Sankeoni. Thank you.
Dr. Larkin, before we move to the next item, I hope you don't mind if I just backpedal us a little bit.
Yep.
I just wanted to thank the members of the PTOs and the boosters and the, the music organizations for coming in tonight. I'm just astounded at, at the momentum that you've all brought to your efforts. I, I can't even, you know, again, I, I just wrote down a few words to, to describe, you know, great momentum, unbelievable with the rainbow colors on the bridge, you know, all the volunteers you've got. You know, the, the boosters, the, these athletes are making lifelong friendships and, and the, the music programs, I can tell you, you know, it's instilling an appreciation for music in these students, really for life. Again, our teachers, our students, our parents, they're all part of this big circle, and you guys are such a, an important component of that. And I, I just want to thank you again for, for doing all you do and for coming in to see us tonight. It was great.
Yes, thank you. So I have successfully retired from the PTO, so it is possible, but I agree. I, I couldn't agree more, and, and as Ms. Flanagan pointed out, I, it really does build community, and it's really what, you know.
Absolutely.
I think public education is really all about, so, thank you. All right. This is a very scattered agenda, all right. We are on. G?
Yeah.
Yes. Yeah, I think we can go to G. Ms. DeSanto, I assume it's Ms. DeSanto, maybe it's Mr. DeSanto. The person didn't come up, come for ten.
She was informed and she said she'd be here and.
All right, it's there, all right. So we're going to go to program ten G, Mr. Ashley.
Yes, thank you. So each year, we have a discussion with the departments around a review of our program of studies and course offerings. And each department looks at their respective courses that they offer, they go over the course descriptions, and then that's when they initiate a conversation about any proposals for new courses. So after conducting that process earlier this school year, we have two major areas. We're looking for updates in our program of studies for next year. The first are new courses that we are offering, and the second is language clarifications, mostly on descriptions of courses or the titles of courses. So in terms of new courses for next year, we are offering a few new courses in different departments, and in no particular order. We're excited to be offering AP Physics for the first time next year, a Drone Technologies course next year, a Robotics course next year, a Cybersecurity course that is part of our pathway, spoke with at an earlier meeting around Computer Science. And in advanced, the highest, a new Advanced Portuguese Five EEP. And that EEP stands for Early Enrollment Program. And so together, we're really excited about offering these courses to our students. Like I said, we, we start with each department, and we try to anticipate and listen to students in terms of what are the needs of the students, and also looking beyond Tiverton High School in terms of what sort of programming do we want to provide for our students so that they're ready for whatever they might want to pursue. And then the second category was the language clarification, which was really, there was some minor change in the sequence of the courses to just align them so that each department describes the courses in a similar format. And then some, some title changes in terms of reformatting the, the name of one course. Usually it was taking a title of a course that was lengthier and actually making it a little bit simpler, because we found that when students were looking at the courses, they sometimes found it just confusing to understand what the course is about. And so we tried to simplify the language of the title of a course.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from the committee, Ms. Farnworth?
I'm very excited to see some of these new courses, you know, the Drone Technologies and Robotics and Cybersecurity. I think that it adds something to our.
I think it adds something to our programs, and it will invite more people into Tiverton High School. I think we're looking forward and looking ahead, and I'm happy about that, I'm excited by that.
Okay, Mrs. Black?
Yes, you all know I'm very excited about the cybersecurity. I consider it the warriors of the future. No bombs, no bullets, just their amazing brains. We have them here, and we can use them, and we, we have to get ahead of all this, because that's where we're going. It's really exciting, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ashley.
Diane, anything?
So I just have one question. So last meeting, we sort of had a presentation from Tech, sort of the virtual high school, if I can use that term. And then there's some other programs that are available as well. How do we, I, I can imagine sort of a, you know, a student-driven inquiry, but how do we really make them aware of that? How do we roll that out to the students?
In terms of like what courses we offer?
Well, making them even aware that such a thing is available. You know, they may sort of sit there at home and weep that they can't take Advanced Latin.
Right.
Let them know there's an option.
Yeah, so we begin in the early winter, in terms of a presentation to the, whatever the current eighth grade class is, where we present an overview of all of the courses. But then the real follow-through in terms of the current middle school classes, where our councils actually go to the middle school and talk about not only new courses, but just also the overall sense of the courses that we offer. And then that's followed up at the high school level, where the counselors go to the classes and speak with students about, again, not only new course offerings, but in terms of developing a plan that's going to meet each student's interests. You know, as a comprehensive high school, we're always looking to provide as many opportunities. And so our guidance department plays a key role, in addition to our department chairs, in terms of communicating out to the students what the courses are for their respective departments.
Okay. All right, great, thank you very much. Any questions from the audience? I lost my agenda. Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Ashley.
Thank you.
So we are at that point in the program where we are going to recognize Mrs. Farnworth, who may or may not be aware that she's being recognized. So as part of the requirements of being a school committee member other than getting your name and address and phone number posted on the website, surprisingly, although I have to say, my phone does not ring off the hook, which is even, I guess, a bigger surprise. One of the things that is required is that you do basically professional development. And there's something called the Rhode Island Association of School Committees, which is a professional organization for the various school committees across the state. And it's actually a really instrumental organization, both in terms of advocacy for the school jurisdictions as well as facilitating discussion with, you know, sort of between different school committees. And most importantly, actually, for me anyway, when I first got on the committee was something called School Committee 101, where they kind of educate you a lot about how schools committees are, should function and governance and open meetings laws. So as part of the requirement, you are to actually attend a certain number of hours of this development. And there's some people, who I won't mention, Mrs. Black, who seem to have thousands and thousands of hours of, of doing this. But Mrs. Farnworth, as, as recently a member, has now completed, do they have the number? I think it's twenty-five.
Twenty-five, I believe.
Yes, so she is being awarded the State of Rhode Island Providence Presentations. Department of Elementary and Secondary Education honors Diane Farnworth in recognition of successful completion of the Rhode Island Association of School Committees Leadership Academy. So, Mrs. Farnworth, congratulations. And I believe it comes with a twenty-five hundred dollar check? No, this is something else. No, this is something else.
And they spelled my name right out of your hands.
The check goes somewhere else, sorry.
Dr. Larkin.
Yes, Ms. Pavo?
It's nice that you think Mrs. Black accumulated thousands of hours, but she is nearing 300.
300? That's all?
She's getting close to 300.
Is that all, Sally?
That's my goal.
That's her goal. I don't know what she's going to do after that with all that free time.
I'm in the Masters Academy now.
Going to do 301?
My cousin asked to pay for everyone and she said, "What is this?"
Yeah.
Our district's the only one that doesn't pay. All the other districts pay for their school committee members to go and then we go up and give them our check and they say, "What is this?"
Hey, we have a lean budget here.
And it's a state law, by the way, that we have to do that and I think the town councils should have to go also.
There's a lot of things the town council should have to do, but they don't and some things they shouldn't do that they do. So, I believe mock trial is ready to launch? All right, so we are returning to Item 10A, recognition of the Tiverton Middle School Mock Trial Team under the leadership of Christine Costa and Jeff Sowa. And...
I thought these girls were just getting excited up, but this is not because this is mock trial.
Hi, everybody. Thank you for having us here tonight. We're a little delayed because we had theater practice, tennis practice and a lot of other activities that the students are involved in tonight, but thank you for having us. I'd like to congratulate the members of the middle school mock trial team. These students have been practicing from October through May, actually early June, two to three times a week, including several Saturdays at the public library, preparing for their role as defense and prosecution for the mock trial tournament in Rhode Island. This is the third year that the team has been undefeated. We actually ranked number one in the state and we made it to the state championships that they participated in last week. So, all of your hard work definitely paid off. I'd also like to thank attorney Jeffrey Sowa, our attorney coach. He is a dedicated mentor to these students. We are grateful for the time and talent that you share with these students to help them improve their ways in which that they defend the case. So, I'd like you to say your words if that's okay. Thank you.
Good evening. She neglected to mention that I had a hearing before the East Providence School Committee about two hours ago too, so that's another reason for my delay. Thank you for having us. We appreciate it, number one. This whole concept of restarting our program, mock trial in Tiverton, actually goes back to Fort Barton when Mrs. Wardell was nice enough to allow us to teach the fourth graders, my wife Jen Sowa over there, and I started teaching the fourth graders some basic concepts in law and then when Ben got to the middle school, we decided that it was a good idea to start them up because I think I mentioned a couple of years back when we were here that the high school trophy is named the Sowa Cup after my father, who ran the mock trial program in the state for several years. So, as I said two years ago, and I restate it now, we are going to add a banner to the auditorium in the high school. I promise, I promise you that. The next four years, the team that we started in the high school this year is incredibly talented and with this group coming in, I can't even figure out who's going to play roles next year because we have so much talent. It's a great program. It's actually considered the best extracurricular program to colleges, so it's going to be really impressive, particularly for these kids who, again, in three short years and an incredible amount of work by Mrs. Costa...
I take attendance really.
I call her Queen Relentless because I'll get a text regularly saying, "Can we practice tomorrow?" And I'm sitting there thinking, "All right, let's do it." And literally Saturdays, Wednesdays, Thursdays, it's non-stop and the kids work so hard. They earned their place. In three short years, we didn't lose a trial and we went to the state championship there. It's the first time in at least a decade that the middle school level had a state championship tournament, or match, rather. Committee member Larkin obviously was there. He saw the trial. The great irony of practicing law is that your goal is to seek justice and I thought that the result of last week's trial, which was a split decision, one judge ruled in our favor, one went against us, it was a grave injustice because anybody that was in that room recognized that it was a close match, but these kids earned it. We finished with the number one record in middle school and like I said, we have nowhere to go but up. I appreciate the support that we get from the committee in terms of travel. We're looking forward to next year, continuing the tradition as my second born will hopefully join the team and the rest of these guys and girls will jump onto the high school team. So, thank you. I know Mrs. Costa wants to recognize each one of them individually so that you know who they are. Only, unfortunately, only Maeve is here that's going to be back on the middle school team next year, but that's only going to make our high school team even stronger next year. So, thank you.
Thank you. So, I'd like to just say a couple of quick things. One is, it was a grave injustice and I don't think that match was even close, frankly, but...
Of course not.
And two other things. One is, there was one team that I won't, you know, call them out by name, but I felt really bad for them because I don't think they even knew what hit them when they came up against Tiverton. It was really pretty impressive. And even more significantly, a number of the sort of court officials, judges, lawyers and stuff like that, who, you know, saw the team, you know, year after year and week after week, you know, would say to me, without even knowing I was really associated with Tiverton because you can't really tell from the audience, "That Tiverton team is really amazing" and I don't think they even knew what hit them. So, really, you guys did a really fantastic job. So, thank you for all your effort.
Thank you. So, at this point, I'd like to recognize each one of you individually for your efforts. You obviously represented the middle school well for your dedication and grit and you should be very proud of yourselves. Ben Sowa. Thomas Costa.
Good job.
You knew it was going to happen.
That's okay. Don't lose his keys though, he might want to go in.
Samuel Farley. Emily Mello. Kylie Azavito. They clearly dressed for the occasion. Connor Nubrega. Jonathan Degala. Maeve McHugh. And of course, we want to also recognize Christina Costa and Jeffrey Sowa. Thank you. Christine Costa, I apologize.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, sweetheart.
Thank you for everything. Thanks, Jeff.
All right. Just finally, I can't help but point out that it has made dinner, lunch and breakfast both more litigious and more argumentative at my house. All right, so we are, I believe, on Item 10I? We're actually on track now? All right. So, Ms. Donnelly Roach?
Thank you, Dr. Larkin. I provided for you in the packet our start and end times for next school year, which is the joint effort of all the administrators and you'll see that there are some changes to the beginning of the day at elementary school. We're starting 13 minutes earlier, I believe it is, correct me if I'm wrong, next school year and we're also increasing the amount of instructional time at the middle school without starting earlier by truncating and eliminating the homerooms. So, you have all of those start times. The end time has not changed at any of the schools and we're excited to make, you know, ensure that every minute is dedicated to instruction.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from the committee? Mrs. Buck?
Yes, I've had some questions about the student advisory that we used to have because it's a state law to get in touch, from right, I mean, to keep in touch with each child and have them connected and I think, I think I see that going away. I've had actually complaints from the students that they don't have that as much anymore, so I just wondered because...
Allow the principals to address that. Our student advisory.
We used to have the advisories every day and now they're condensed.
You're referring to the high school schedule?
So, advisory at the middle school is one time a month versus one time a week now, but that was negotiated during contract agreements?
So, it used to be every day?
No, it was never every day.
Once a week and now it's once a month?
Correct.
Okay.
But we do still have an advisory program and I have an advisory myself.
Okay, all right, because I know people that were trying to come in, like the Tiverton Prevention, different people, they used to be able to get in touch with the kids, are finding it difficult, that's all I'm saying. Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Pavo?
Yeah, just have one question. Were the administrators, teachers, administrators, were they involved in these changes?
These changes were developed through the administrative process. I think each principal got input different ways.
Okay.
The initial change came through the contract.
Okay.
The initial end times came through the negotiations that were established in the contract and then we had to build from that.
Okay. Thank you.
So I need, so I want to...
Okay, thank you. Item 10J, disposal of books. Ms. Donnelly Roach?
Yes, this is just a follow-up request to last meeting and in response to our adoption of the new English Language Large Curriculum, we want to honor our policy and process to make sure that we dispose of the books at the three elementary schools in the proper way, so we're asking your permission.
Can I have a motion for that? Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Okay. I just want to jump back to I for a second. I didn't allow the audience an opportunity to ask any questions about that if they wanted to. Okay. I'm sorry? No, 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 sorry, about the, Item 10I was the start, school start and end times. Are there any questions from, or I guess of the books too, if you have questions about the books? Okay. Item 10K, the FY20 budget. Dr. Sanquioni?
In your packet, you have a re-appropriated budget based upon the budget that was passed by the town. I want to give commendation, public commendation to our director of finance, Mr. Joe Crowley, who put this together by, once we knew the overall number and you can see in the documents we provided you, how each number lies out in the chart of accounts in each category there, but I'll call your attention to the last page or to the tie-in part. The approved school department budget from the town is $31,890,000, but yet our overall budget is $33,364,356 and just reminding the committee that, you know, we've made this commitment again to use Medicaid and fund balance, drawdown of $1,174,356 and also using the IDA grant, a carryover amount of $300,000 to tie in and balance the budget this year. So, although we are extremely grateful to the town and the folks who have looked at the schools and tried to provide the greatest amount of revenue through the town, we're still relying on one-time revenue to ultimately balance for the FY20 budget.
Right. And, you know, I have been thinking about that as well and I think we need to start our budget process like tomorrow for FY21, so maybe take June off.
Can I ask one question?
Yeah.
Mr. Crowley, the capital appropriation, is that included in here?
No.
Why not?
It's a separate, separate item.
It will be recorded though?
Oh, yeah.
By the school department?
Yeah.
But they're not our operations, I think.
It's not our operations, but it is a line item and I would have thought you would have put it in here and shown it as funded from capital in the town.
We have a separate capital budget and certainly can provide that document to you.
Okay.
Any other questions, Mrs. Buck?
Mr. Mantel?
Could you, he's been standing there patiently. Yes, please.
First of all, I made a promise to Sally that if Budget Number Two passed, I would have gold-colored shoes, so it passed. The next day, I found these shoes in my closet that I've had for about 30 years and I never wore them, they're old basketball shoes and I went out to Ace out in Westport and bought a can of gold, I think it's the paint and I sprayed them and I put them outside to dry. I'm a man of my word.
Yes, you are.
And I stood in the back because I didn't want to be a distraction during the meeting and I was also late and I'll have a note for that later, but anyway, I'm glad I could help out and I, unfortunately, we couldn't, budget couldn't generate enough of revenue for you, but it's basically just about what you needed and I'm glad I could help.
And thank you for making it happen.
Thank you for your efforts.
Now I can take these shoes off because they're killing me.
I have to thank him, he's a man of his word. He came into the council last night and it was a very formal setting because we were, swearing in the new police chief and everybody was standing at attention. And I fired chief and I said, I said, "Don't worry, Mr. Mantel." He said, "They're in the car." I said, "No, you can leave them out there" because it was very formal. I said, "Just wear them tomorrow and I really appreciate it." Thank you very much. We had fun standing out there all day greeting everyone too. That was a great day. Thank you very much.
So, those shoes would work really good on a campaign for the Budget Committee. All right. We are up to 11. Announcement, scheduled meetings, reports, health and wellness update. Ms. Buck, you want to tell us about the...
Yeah, so we had our health and wellness meeting tonight. In 2007, eight, they, the state passed a health and wellness and it's the strictest in the country as far as the food that the children eat at lunch and everything and when they first passed it, it wasn't too good because, of course, they didn't ask us anything and they changed from, children were used to white bread, they changed to whole wheat, so Mr. Crowley remembers, everything was in the trash, they'd take the hamburger out and throw the thing in the trash. So, we met with the state and we told them, "Let's be reasonable because what good is it if they don't eat it?" So, they came along and they came along with us and we've worked together since then. Now, I brought this five signs with me because in the original one, it was physical education, was exercise, it was good nutrition and it was mental health in the original one. So, we became a change direction school a few months ago, recognizing, and so we know the five signs and they're someone's personally agitated, changed, withdrawn, poor self-esteem, they don't take care of themselves, they're hopeless and we teach the students, if you have a friend that you see this happening to, you know, try to, don't make fun of them, try to talk to them or get them help or if even adult to adult, we sometimes see this and we've had another tragedy in this town this week and I said, "Get that sign up." And then the state told me tonight, they took that out. I said, "Well, I don't care if they took it out because Tiverton's going to leave it in" and I think it always goes that as long as we comply with what they say, we can add to it. So, Mrs. Donnelly Roach is going to work with them, she said, "And to update our policy, we have to update it" and then we, and of course, give it to the policy subcommittee, but they said our policy was good, you know, they have a new way to measure it, of course, they keep changing everything as they do, but we'll be fine and we'll do that. But it was a good meeting, we had a lot of, we had parents here, community members and it was, was really an excellent meeting. And our food advisory trips, as I said before, went very well. We visit kindergarten through 12, talk to the kids, see what they like, what they don't like, if they have new recipes, if they bring one in, we name it after them and put it on the menu, the elementary kids love it. Mr. Caporal does an amazing job with it, he always has and the kids really enjoy that. And there's 17 choices, like at the middle school and high school. It's not like it used to be. It's not like it used to be. I have a really, when I, when I had six children and I was working, I had to get their lunch the night before, I was very busy. So in those days, we didn't have the nutrition guidelines like we do now. So I put all their lunches together and I put them out and they brought them to school. And one of them, I had five sprites and one Heineken. So there was a lunch with a Heineken in it and thank God the right kid got the Heineken because he put, he put it away in the bag and brought it home to me. I would have been arrested quickly. So that's what can happen when, the way the school lunch used to be. They're much better now. The nutrition guidelines are much better. And I just think that Chartwell's does a great job and it was, is a little thing like they have the vegetables and they wouldn't eat them. So we said, what if we get, just get ranch dressing to dip it in, a little thing like that. And the kids all were happy about it. And they'll tell us, you know, the pizza's slimy and, you know, I want lobster and steak. And then Doug used to have a heart attack, it's not in the budget, Mrs. Black. So anyway, it's been, it's been great. And we'll meet again in September and I want more of the parents from the schools if we can get them. The nurses always come. In fact, when they put this out, the nurses came to my house that year to pick it up. They were so excited. And I see a big difference because I think at home, things have changed, you know, the way, the way kids eat and they want gluten-free and they didn't realize we already have a lot of gluten-free things on the menu. So I think we're keeping up with it and thank you, everyone, for being supportive during this. The first year, we tried to pass it. We almost couldn't because we had one school committee member who didn't believe in any of this and he wouldn't, he wouldn't vote for it and he was fighting us tooth and nail. Mrs. Polish was on the food advisory committee and she was getting so angry, remember? But finally, we got it passed and we're moving along. They still want their coffee milk. They can't have coffee milk because it's too much money because of the price of the coffee. So we're going to have the kids write to Hood and protest and go to the state house, they said, you have a voice and use it and let's see what happens. We'll call Harry Hood and see what's going on with that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So we have a policy subcommittee meeting on the 17th and school committee meeting scheduled for July 9th and August 13th. Is there anyone who cannot make the July 9th meeting? No? You made the ninth. But you can't make the second, right? Okay. All right. I'm going to ask for a motion to move into executive session under Rhode Island General Law 42465A2, legal and advice litigation, school administrator contracts.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.